With the Planning and Development Committee, Chris Fall is the Chair.
Great, thank you. First item on our agenda is the intergovernmental agreement for the sewer connection. We have, patent together a draft that we want, would like to execute with the county on the extension of sewer out to Radford Road area, I guess would be the way of describing it. Some background, the county has come before City Council several months ago, describing this as before, I think, the election. And as many people will remember, that some members of council were very critical of the proposed idea of extending the city sewer. Making an agreement with the county to make the city sewer collection available to the county. And then we entered into a discussion with the county and with the county's consultant on this issue, because there is, there are certain important parameters and questions that needed to be answered through this process. It is known that in this area, there is some septic failing and Margaret Creek, which is a tributary of the Hocking River, has some problems with environmental pollution. And I think this was our number one issue as the people who were picked to represent the City Council in this process. Both Chris Niceley and I were on this ad hoc committee to look at this. Also, the mayor's office were, was involved, the city planner and the city engineer, Paula, 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 all the Ps. And so it was, at times, very intensely
Debated.
debated. It was, at points, highly critical of what was being put forward by the county. But I think between all the parties, we have come with a reasonable draft expectation and contract. I'd like to say that our number, my number one, I will not use the royal we, my number one concern in going into this was not establishing sewer so that we could have growth, growth, growth in this area. It has no zoning. This county was not interested in establishing any zoning in this area. That was the number one step in the whole thing, was that it, there was not going to be any zoning. So we had to deal with that. We did not want to put sewer out there so that it would kind of have companies go out there, leaves Athens, and go into an area that there wouldn't be any taxes for the city of Athens. We didn't want to develop anything out there so that it would be a kind of attractive nuisance for the city of Athens when it comes to taxes. And as I said, the number one priority for members were probably in the environmental problems. So I think that the things that came out of this is that the draft sewer collection agreement is limited in space. And there's a map at the back of this that shows basically what it is, is that it covers the areas that are developed now, they have single home development or limited business, that it has a certain number of connections that are limited also. This is on an open-ended sewer connection scheme. It has basically the number of single home, single family equivalents when the day one of the agreement is signed with the deadening authority in place. So if somebody wants to develop, like if you see in this big pink area, wants to develop, you know, 500 small family homes, that's not going to be under this agreement. That has to be negotiated entirely separately and will not necessarily be agreed to with the city. So I think that our concerns were heard by everybody involved and the county concerns about having zoning was heard by everybody involved. And we came to a nice development. So Paula, do you have anything to add?
I'm awaiting questions, as it were. I think that the working group, we did work hard over the last year and a half to reach this. It does indeed cap what we're providing. There's no allowance for any future agreement. That would have to be, come back to the table and determine. The calculations, Andy's worked very hard and worked with his staff to make sure that we're putting in place something that we can monitor and test and that the different calculations in terms of percentages of cost are attributed back to what we'll have to bear and what the county will have to bear.
And I want to put forward that this is, you know, the county is going to be responsible for costs of the infrastructure and the costs for billing and the costs for, you know, the city is basically a supplier of a necessary service.
There are related costs, as you know, and improvements that we'll have to do inside the city in order to convey that. And that's going to be offset by the amount of money that we'll receive for taking in that sewer, so.
Paula, can you just give us some idea of what some of those infrastructure issues that we would have to do?
For example, with our Richland Avenue South project, couldn't come at a better time for us to look at all of this in case we need to increase the trunk line size there on the avenue for, that'll be one of the points coming in. One example, the fact that they will have to maintain, as you indicated, construct, build and maintain their own lines, that's where you get the 70, 30 percent for how the billing will be, because they will have to maintain their lines and so they'll have a cost associated there. We also, you know, worked with the county. I think we reached a good place in terms of the cost and affordability, so it's affordable to the other residents outside the city.
Steve?
I'm glad this came up in this document anyway. I know that we've had long conversations about volume, the volume of waste coming into our wastewater treatment plant, albeit newly renovated. I do have a couple of questions, though, about section 2.3. And that is that it kind of maps or lays out, if you will, the maximum and what would happen, what gets triggered if it exceeds six times a year, 1.6 million gallons per day. How long will that stay in effect?
What do you mean?
In terms of this document, how long, how long will that potential trigger be in play, for years, forever?
Well-
Three years and then it gets reevaluated, or?
Well, for the whole document, for the whole-
For the course of the contract.
For the course of the contract.
I would think, which is 10, aren't we renewable at 10 years?
Ten years.
I mean, one of the questions that they had, and that's why it was in red, was the length of the term of financing. So they're going through the same water pollution control loan fund that we did for our wastewater treatment plant upgrades in order to get funding for this.
So they have to commit to a certain amount of time because they have to finance it. Really, again, we're going to be limiting to a top end of taps. So in theory, we're going to hit a certain level and stop at that point. So therefore, the amount of gallons and strength would be, you know, pretty much fixed at that point until we renegotiate for additional taps at that point.
Sure.
You know, again, this, actually, this is, they have yet to come back at us with some changes. I think the conversation we had last, earlier today, in fact, with one of the county commissioners that they will, they'd like to see some modifications. We don't know what they are. The clock is ticking on their side. But in spirit and in general, we have pretty much what we're going to set down at this point. There are negotiation points in there we have placed in there, so that's, we have to go back and forth on. Again, we'll just be doing a meeting, we got three points in the city, we'll be measuring it. And that's really what we'll be billing then. They collect the bill, as you said, the billings and the maintenance of everything out there, as well as the billing of it. They've got a lot of work to do, too, on their side.
Sure. Yeah, that brings up another point that I had, or a question that I had, which is the entry points A, B, and C. I was looking for them on the map, but I couldn't seem to find them.
They're actually yet to be determined. We have to assume one's going to be on 56 going in. If you look at the points of the city where it actually meets, I believe 682 was one of the other ones we discussed.
Elliottsville coming down-
And Elliottsville.
Coming down through Elliottsville, Derry Lane was one of the ideas.
And I think the shift to, well, actually, one would be 50, actually. Take it back, 50, Derry Lane, and then 682, no, 56.
56.
Doesn't go to 50, 682. So those would be the three points, 56, Derry Lane in the middle, and 50, 32 at the other end of Richland. One of the conversations, of course, we've been having is whether try shifting that one further to the north. The closer we get to the, to Derry Lane, the better capacity we have. There's actually been conversations of that nature. But that is, you know, pretty much where we are is where we're going to be. Because that's, if you look at the map, it's basically a circle going around, starting on the 50, all going around to the 56.
My last question, which is relevant to this whole section, which is 2.3.1, which almost reads like there will be at, at the entry point A, B, and C, a monitoring station or-
Yeah.
So we are going to be looking at grease flow, we're going to be looking at suspensions, we're going to be looking at biochemical oxygen, chemical oxygen demand, pH levels, all of those are going to be going on at these monitoring stations.
To make sure we're not getting industrial waste, to make sure we're not getting something that shouldn't be coming through the system.
Andy anticipates doing that at those three points four times every month, you know, so why we go out and do other testing.
And that was one of our concerns about changes of land use, because they don't have zoning out there, that if all of a sudden you get some kind of industrial site out there, whatever it is, you know, abattoir or whatever, that all, it would kind of signal a change and then we need to look at it, because we are, it's based on single family. It's not commercial, it's not industrial, and there's different types of requirements under the O R C for industrial and sort of sewage, so.
And Andy did, we actually spoke about that late this afternoon. He indicated he would install valves so that there is a shut off that can occur if that happens. And, you know, we have it outlined, based on that strength, the usage, just like we do for the city users. But frankly, he tells me fairly openly and honestly that he believes it'll all come in under residential. There's just not enough industrial or commercial out there that's going to-
Currently. Currently.
Currently, thank you.
Because there is a lot of land out there to develop.
Which is outside the security.
Which is outside of the site.
I get that. I get that. Yeah.
Yeah, but a lot of land, because those lots are huge, those lots are multi acres. So if I owned that, I'd certainly be selling off some land, so we're going to have more houses occurring, too. Not, not in the, what color is this? Not in the-
Pink.
Not in the blue.
But the thing is, is that anybody who's developing subdivisions in the pink would not necessarily be allowed to tap into this sewer agreement.
They're in a three mile zone for subdivisions, first of all, so we have oversight of the subdivision division development.
Anyways.
You're right about mine a lot splits, that would double the taps, which is why we're trying to fix that at a certain tap-
Yeah.
-number. There, I think you're at the regional planning commission, where actually one of the realtors who sit on the regional planning commission is saying, okay, so who actually decides those extra taps? Because we, really, there's a little bit of play. We have a certain, we have an estimated number, and at the time of the installation, of course, there'll be a definite number. At that point, there's probably some play in between, but it's not like we're going to double up. That's for the future agreement. And again, the future agreement can add other stipulations as well. You know, this is where we went back and forth, because really, the whole thing is how do we control this, so we, we don't have everybody splitting the lots into four or putting a pickle factory in their backyard where nobody's looking. You know, these are the issues that we have, you know, how to, how to make sure we don't have overcapacity more than we brought into.
And I think that part of this agreement is, it doesn't preclude other agreements in the future for different types of planning, protocols and agreements. And it does tap, it does limit the taps. I think that was our big thing, was it limits the tap, limits the kind of collection affluent that we are getting by this monitoring. So in, in the reality of not being able to have zoning out in the county, this is our kind of zoning equivalent.
Compromise.
It's a control. It's definitely a land use control.
Can you just tell us again why the county, why we're doing this?
At this, at the current status, they will probably be under an EPA order at some point, because there is a lot of septic, septic system failure in this area. And so there is a lot of problems going into Margaret Creek, which causes problems that are related to Hocking. And at some point, you know, it's an environmental problem. It's not a growth problem, it's not an environmental, it's not an economic development issue, it's an environmental problem.
I just, yeah, a little bit more of the history of it, that the first study that I have, at least in the records here, when we began talking about it, was that the first study for a potential sewer alignment was in 1997. And Athens County has received a notice of violation with concern over environmental and surface water quality in the U.S. Route 50 corridor. So it's, you know, definitely in our interest to, to look at this, to be forward thinking. And I can remember, I think, one of the initial presentations from the county, city county health department was a comment that this would be the single most important health improvement we could make for the Athens County area. So I'm, I am pleased with all the work that, the careful work that's gone in to look and be careful about the agreement that we worked out with county commissioners, but also to look at the bigger global picture of what we're needing to do for Appalachian, Ohio. And if I understand the estimates, just from the bigger perspective, the flow from the county, this first phase of this limited number of taps will be approximately 10% of our flow, was the estimate from Andy Stone. Not to discount that we don't need to, we need to monitor it, we need to be careful about it, but, but that's what the bigger picture is in terms of our total flow for the city.
There was an affordability factor for the county related to this funding, and basically that's why they sought out the city, as opposed to building their own plant, which may not be feasible.
They have two other options. Yeah. The discussion was to re-up their, improve their Plains Wastewater Treatment Plant. The other one is to build one entirely new on Margaret's Creek, and that's where it comes cost prohibitive for them. Again, what you're seeing with the septic systems out there, they're at the back end of the lifespan. Some of the airator systems out there, they're no longer licensed or allowed, as you know, and the idea of rebuilding a leach bed on many of these plots are just too small to do it. So they're coming right up against their, the limited lifespan of the leach beds. You know, again, the next agreement could be a totally different animal at that point. You know, that's, that leaves us open to, you know, actually, to be harsh, let's take the extreme of what we have. You know, we could put in, the next agreement, which would be the next, you know, taps, could actually include an annexation component, could conclude a requirement for some kind of land use or zoning component. Not that they would like that. And that's why I mentioned, because those are about the most egregious ones they'd have to deal with. But the fact is, we have, you know, we have control over this on some level. The other thing, of course, is that we have, you know, our comprehensive plan talks about growth in that area, and this is one of the things that stopped it, you know, just the lack of infrastructure out there, both in the county plan and the city. So these are the things to think about in the long term.
But this, this particular draft does not-
Address those things at all?
It's, addresses them in such a way that it doesn't open a spigot, I guess, would be-
Pandora's box.
Pandora's box is a better, of just open-ended sewer, because we know, what happens when you have open-ended sewer hookups is that you can get just, you know, leapfrog development, and that's something that the city didn't want, because there's, you know, concern about drain of taxation and taxable businesses. And I think that that was one of the major components that went into this with the limits on the types of affluent and the number of taps and that, you know, with Paul Loeb and other cynical members of the committee-
(laughing)
Would, you know, I think that, that our concerns were definitely heard. And the fact that I'm even, like, bringing this forward tonight in the vein of happy camaraderie probably speaks a lot to the process that went forward with the county and the consultant that we worked with. I think it was a good way of coming together with everybody who worked together on this.
And I still contend that I would deem a majority of the residents in this area will be served work inside the city limits, so are already, you know, paying towards their city income tax.
Yep.
One other thing I just wanted to point out was that it is still considered a draft. We have not come back to the table. We're waiting for that call as they're absorbing it. So there may be modifications to this agreement that you're reviewing today.
Can you give us a timeline of exactly what the latest from the county needs on this?
I know that we built in here a June 1st, kind of, as of effect of that date. But they submitted for their funding with a draft agreement, so I'm sure that they have, you know, a certain period of time, and I know that it's prior to the end of the year, in order to have a finalized one, if they're even considered for the award.
Paula, there may need to be quick turnaround at some point on this. However, we won't bring our ordinance up until we hear for a final, I don't want to bring a draft up for an ordinance.
Sure, I agree.
So I think that that's-
Debbie won't let you.
Right. Well.
I was just wondering who was involved on the county level. We heard the city people and I just-
Basically, just one county commissioner, because if you have two in the room-
Right.
So that was County Commissioner Lenny Eliason and Jennifer Fromer, who is their consultant, engineering consultant. I think that's it. Do we ever have anybody else?
On the other side of, of course, there was, both Chris's right here, Paul Loeb, Andy Stone, myself, Paul Loeb as well. So we had, we had a lot of eyes on it, and we have a lot of concerns still. I think this is about the best match we can do at this point. I think it will work. Again, it'll also give us infusion of cash to do some of the I and I work. I think that's what Andy looks at, as well as the fact that the impact of Margaret's Creek, if we let it keep going, eventually Margaret's Creek will be bothering us, or rather, have a problem. And that will flow, of course, into the Hocking, and then we'll have a problem. So he's looking in terms of regional overall health conditions.
I believe we do have a water well. I don't know if we use it very often, but there is a water well out there.
We have two, three water wells on Obolinas.
Yeah.
And they're being, actually-
Worked on.
-replumbed right now, two of them were, I think, three of them.
And they're repaired.
Yeah. They're mine, they're a small percentage of our water, I think five to 10% max. At the same time, you know, we should be concerned, everybody downstream of the water wells, regardless of the water wells. I mean, we've got a lot of people playing the river when they shouldn't, or canoe, and we want to make it so it's a, you know, a healthy environment.
No questions? So I think that we will, people know about this, look for emails on possible changes or updates to the draft, and we may have to move on this at some point quickly.
I'll get something scheduled.
Yeah. I think that the onus is on the-
County.
County. Okay. Next on our, our agenda is, oh, revocable licenses. We love right of ways. I'll say we love right of ways. Okay, there's a couple of them on tonight. We'll, we'll deal with the easier one first. There's a application for a revocable license on a city right of way for 70 North High Street, put in by John Morton, for a white picker fence in the yard. And this would be for a 10-year revocable license. And you have-
This is a new one?
The drawings, this is a renewal, a 10-year renewal.
Oh, a renewal.
And the city has basically signed off on it, all the various departments have signed off on it. The white picker fence is already in the yard, so this is a 10-year renewal.
And the fence has been there for a good number of years.
Probably.
Not, yeah, it's been there, I've viewed it for several years.
Yes. So, any questions? So that will come up as an ordinance for next week. The second revocable license is somewhat of a forgery. This is for 91 South May. 91 South May, in 1997, they put in a revocable license and got a revocable license for a six-foot fence into the city's right of way. As we all know, there's supposed to be 10-year renewals. It was not renewed in 2007. It was also not built to the original specs. I guess the, they wanted a six-foot fence and somebody measured it at some point and was actually eight foot, and so now they would like a change to the revocable license because they bought property next door that's 20 feet and they want to expand it. So it's, it's a difficult right of way, because it's not, it's not to the original specs, it hasn't been renewed, and they want to change it. So I would argue, at this point, along with the city, the city planner and code enforcement office has said that they don't approve of the, of the right of way as written because of all the various problems it has. So I think that what needs to happen is a variety of things, scenarios can happen. One, we can put the ordinance out for the current right of way as it stands, which is not to specs.
Right, not complying.
We can turn that one down and they have to put in a renewal for what is standing now, or they can put in a renewal for their, they can put in a new right of way for the new 20-foot right of way they want, which nobody's agreeing with.
You're talking about a new application?
New application. So if I had my, if I was advising at this point as committee chair, I would probably put in a application for what they have now, because I would think that's going to, after all our troubles with renewals and right of ways lately, probably has standing of best being able to.
So basically getting approval for-
What is now there.
What is in existence.
And bothers me that somebody didn't put in a new-
That wasn't built to approval.
You know, a renewal at 2007, and, I mean, I can understand changes in owners and this, but this just says to me that they want a renewal of something that's not up to specs, that they haven't renewed when they were supposed to. So I would suggest that they need to go through the process again. But I'm open to debate, discussion.
Well, okay, let me get it clear in my head. It wasn't renewed in 2007, so it's lapsed, so there is no renewal. You can't renew something that is expired. It's gone, it's finished. So they have to-
It's a good way of putting it.
They have to start all over.
So.
Right? I mean, you got-
I would, that's a very succinct way of putting it.
Okay, yeah.
So.
However-
On the other side of it. Yeah.
However, what about the new, should it all be incorporated into a new application?
I would, I would-
I would say so.
I would suggest a new application. They haven't built any new, they can put in a new application for what they want to do, whether it's agreed on or not, depending on the criteria and all the stuff that, as council, we look at right of ways, and we're a little more skeptical about right of ways now. You know, whether that will be agreed on, they have a fence right now. Whether they can go for the agreement to what is there, or if they want to.
Offer them the choice?
Offer.
A new application for, including what their modifications requests are, or an application for what is existing.
I mean, either way, they're going to have to have a new application. They have lapsed, it has lapsed. It has lapsed by a number of years. It's not a month or two.
If I look at the actual application, first page, though, it says, "A request renewal." But I assume that's, they're just really covering both as a, as a renewal period. But I assume that they're just really covering both as a renewal period.
Michelle?
Okay.
I'm reviewing a letter that was sent to the code office from a gentleman who lives next door, and he makes a lot of excellent points here on concerns, which you've also mentioned, Chris, but I do think this needs to be looked at more closely. And I'm going to state the obvious, but, you know, why is it we didn't catch it in 2007? So, we probably don't have the answer to that. None of us were around, but that's obviously something that, it's not on the onus of the...
Is it on the onus of the land owner?
Owner.
Or the code office to send out? I would expect that it would be on the landowner because they're the one who are requesting for right-of-way.
I would probably defer to the law director for the answer, but I will claim that I will, you know, I can accept that this lapsed and we didn't have that.
So, obviously...
We just have better systems in place.
Right, and there's a, there's a lot of issues here that I think need to be looked at more closely.
So, is this, this new design is actually being asked to be built into that alleyway? That's one of the big issues.
Further into the alleyway.
Further into the alleyway, okay.
So, I mean, that's an issue right there is that it would no longer become an alleyway, which is an issue of all sorts of landowner rights along the whole alleyway.
Also public utilities, utilities access.
Well, as the city engineer points out in his review, that he's concerned about that.
Correct.
We face that on other places in the city.
Well, also, I mean, people, we access our backyard, our garage by our alleyway, and this keeps parking off the front, which, you know, has something to be said about it.
In the point of an alley to have one?
We do have unmaintained alleyways here in this city.
Right.
Some of them, we don't want people driving in anywhere.
Right.
I mean, not to put a fence down, it is the city's property.
Exactly.
Don't get me started.
What?
I was thinking of a specific alley.
Don't get her started, which I understand, but yes, one of the things that's been drilled into is you don't want to give up wholly, you know, the city property that you have.
There may be utilities down it that we need to replace.
Correct.
There may be utilities that are fragile that you don't really want to be driving over or have people cruising over, you know, or even putting fences in for that matter.
Right.
And this is a large extension into the right-of-way.
I would imagine some of our power lines, overhead power lines, run down through some of these alleys as well.
Storm sewers?
Yes.
Are there rules of a subdivision for this particular neighborhood?
Boy, that's probably ancient.
Oh, ancient subdivision, but it's more a right-of-way issue.
Just want to know. Just curious.
So, we can communicate our concerns about this particular thing with the landowner?
Yes.
And suggest an alternative course of action for them?
Okay.
Will be happy? Okay? People happy? Okay, we have a lot split. Okay, we have a lot split out in the Plains, which, here we go.
Oh.
Okay. The reason why we have this, the jurisdiction over this lot split out in the Plains is because it's within our three-mile planning jurisdiction. It's been requested that a minor lot split be allowed. The planning commission has voted unanimously for this lot split and a variance that needs to be attached to it because the width-to-depth ratio is not according to our regulations. However, the planning commission has voted unanimously to go forward with this lot split, which is at 63 East First Street on the Plains.
We don't have it.
In the Plains.
None of us have it.
We got it last week.
Oh.
Yeah, last week, last week. The city has signed off on this.
Planning commission.
Planning commission.
Planning commission, well, also the various city code enforcement and planning, so no issues. So, I would suggest that it's a relatively easy minor lot split. It does not need a public hearing because it's a minor lot split.
It's basically the width-to-depth ratio that needs to be...
So, it'd need a variance to go with it, so it'd be a lot split with a variance.
Okay.
Questions? Okay. The, we have a annexation request from 2 Ridgeview Drive, which is a 2.037 acre annexation into the city. The planning commission has accepted this annexation, has recommended this annexation with a zoning designation as R1, so the city can accept the annexation. There will be a public hearing on October 21st concerning this annexation. We did get this in the beginning of the summer, so it's a relatively straightforward annexation up on the south side, on Ridgeview. If there's any concerns that come forward on October 21st, before the third reading, we could table the annexation. However, I don't think that there is, the planning commission has gone through the public hearing they need to and has recommended annexation and designation of R1 zone. Questions? I have no miscellaneous. Any miscellaneous?
No, no miss.
No miss? Okay. That's the end of my committee.
Okay, we'll move on to Finance and Personnel Committee. Chris Nisley is chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have seven agenda items tonight to cover. Some of them are just more of an information to council members and to the public where we are with certain, certain things, and that is the case with the first agenda item, which is about credit cards. We have two different items for the credit cards. One of them is that a policy for city employees on the use of credit cards. Some of the departments have a policy now, but we need to make sure that it's a uniform stated policy, and this is a recommendation through the auditor's office. So, just to alert council members that we'll probably be looking at the policy and it will come through here for approval, and that just kind of keeps the procedures consistent throughout the departments in the city. Auditor Heck, do you have anything else to add or...
No, I think you covered it.
Okay.
Auditors, did you have a question?
A question. Member Nisley, I think, said that some departments have a policy, some don't, so this would mean that it would, the policy would be the same across the board for...
Well, it would for administrative offices under the mayor. Elected officials' offices would be able to put forth their own policy. The auditors like us to have citywide policies and things like that, but, you know, legally, that's not how it works. Counsel can't tell me what kind of policies to have for my office because I'm also an elected official. They do want a general one for the mayor's office that would cover those city departments under the mayor. The way it stands now is there is a mayor's office policy, but the police and fire departments also have their own policy, and there's nothing saying that they can't do that. This is something that the mayor, service safety director, need to look at. I think in some ways their policies are more restrictive and more detailed, and there's nothing wrong with that, and that would be up to the mayor if he wants everybody to handle them exactly the same, but I'm not sure that that's always appropriate either. And so, it just is something that needs to be worked on, and about two years ago, I've been told for about two years by the auditors is city policies should go through council for approval. And, you know, it's not really up to everybody, just write a policy and say, here, this is what we're going to do. So, you can do your procedures and, you know, things like that, SOPs, but actual policies should be approved by council. And this one is one that should be, and I think, one of the other reasons I wanted to bring this up again, because those policies are old, is to remind people, and as, you know, Mayor, Member Nisley is going to talk about, is the more the city accepts online payments and credit cards for payments, I think city employees need to be very aware of what policies should be and protecting our own credit cards and the information from other people's credit cards. And that's, so it's two different things, but it's all related to credit cards, and, you know, we do have a good red flag policy in place, but I'm not sure if everybody in the city even knows we have that, so.
So, this will help to spell it out? I think so that we're...
I think so. As a department that's never dealt with credit cards, starts taking credit cards, they need to know what our responsibilities are as a public entity.
Yes, Councilmember Reiser.
So, we're actually, we're talking about two things. One is how a department itself would use a credit card, okay? Go down the filling station. The other is, I'm receiving credit card information from a constituent consumer for a payment or something, maybe even form of identification. So, we don't have a policy on how to handle those numbers now, except what?
Well, they're really two different administrative matters, and so one of them is that we will be making sure that all sections of the city have a policy on credit card usage, so that's when an employee from a particular department, somebody from city council offices, needs to purchase the chairs, as we're done this year, if we have credit cards to be able to do that. So, we just need to make sure that...
Do we have a credit card?
That every organization...
I didn't know that.
And that every department then has a policy spelled out. Not, I mean, I don't know if it's totally parallel, but the university at a certain point said every, every college and every department within every college and university will have a policy on retention. It could have been different for different departments and colleges.
They had kind of a scandal there too, didn't they?
Well, and this is what we're looking to, that's why we work with the auditor's office, to make sure that we have the policies in place so that there are safeguards and checks and balances, and I think that's what that first issue is about. The second one is, the second...
Can I add one more thing before you move on to that? And maybe it would help if I sent out the copies of the policies that I do have on file that are a little bit old, so it will give you an idea of what kinds of things are in there. And I believe it's the police department, maybe the fire department, has a form that people have to sign out the credit card. Some of them address who is in charge of the credit card, you know, things like that. So, it depends on how specific the departments want to get, who's going to monitor that. The other thing about, and I think that's why it's important for my office, is just because you have a credit card, and we're not talking about P-cards, where money is already loaded or anything like that, that if you want to order a thing online, which is obviously more common now, not just books and training manuals, but parts and, you know, office supplies, there should be, approval to spend that money should be in place before you use that credit card. I think you all know how that works for the city, but that's the other thing. It's easy to go ahead and use this credit card, but you're supposed to have your purchase order number in place before you use that, even though, you know, the company would probably let you go ahead and use it, but, so it's just a reminder that the other processes still have to be in place.
Thank you. The second item, and maybe I should have put them at totally opposite ends on the finance and personnel, but it is an issue that we've been looking at for several months, and that's the hope that the city will be able to begin to accept credit card payments for utility bills. And I believe Service Safety Director Heran Mosley and Ron Lucas, the Assistant Service Safety Director, have been working on this.
Well, we're just satisfied with the fee, so what we're doing is seeking other vendors. It wouldn't be just utility billing code. We get, you know, when you go in and you have to place an application, 7,500 or what have you, that they can, we can accept payments. The community center does now, so we're seeking other vendors to see if we can't get something less than the $3.48 per transaction. It just seems unreasonable to pass that on to citizens, I mean, in this day and age, so.
It's a lot.
So, thank you.
Hopefully by the end of this year.
Thank you for pursuing that, because I know we've had a number of comments from citizens saying, you know, especially since we have a high volume of rental properties, and often the tenant is responsible for paying the utility bills, and it, I think it would, I think there would be a fairly good usage level, you know, for people who are renting and would be able to pay by credit card, so.
Do we even know what our walk-in rate is for paying bills?
I can find that out, and it's pretty high.
Is it pretty high?
More than not. What you see is the kids coming in and they're leaving the door, and then they're coming back as they're going across the street to an ATM because we don't accept them. So, we'd like to be a little more consumer friendly.
But then on the other side, you are trying to be consumer friendly because you're trying to bring that cost, you're trying to find a vendor who will not charge such a large fee, yeah.
I can only imagine that their transaction fees, if they're going right across the street to an ATM somewhere, is probably lower than the $3.48 per transaction.
Right, right. Well, thank you for the comments and thanks for persisting, yes.
I have a question. Would this also include citations such as parking tickets and things like that?
I hadn't thought, looked into that, but we can look into that also with the parking enforcement division, so.
And we'd have some interest. I don't know if that's very far out in the distance, the Athens Transit, and being able to do monthly or yearly passes, and that might increase ridership if we could have some people get that.
I think the first endeavor they wanted was to be able to lease by passes at the community center at remote locations, so we'll add that in.
Yes.
Just one other comment. I don't know that there has been a problem with policy or people taking advantage, but I like the check and balances. You mentioned that at the end, that I think that is important to look at policy and that there, that be mindful of the fact that we need to be, have a check and balance system, so.
Well, there's a dollar check amount, balance system at the auditor's level. This really was initiated by EPW saying, we could use a credit card. They do not have one. Maybe the parts they're buying will not really, you know, write a check, accept a check at one level or a PO at that point. They're just not set up for that anymore. They've gone electronic. He's saying, well, you know, if we, there's an impedance with actually replacement parts because we have to go through a process.
Right.
So, that's really what initiated this thing. We, you know, then the question evolved to, how many credit cards are out there? Who does it? We know the police and fire have for, it's the gas pumps that OU shut down for the weekend. They need to buy gas, you know? I know we have one for various activities and each, each of the elected officials as well, but then it says, do we have uniform checks and balances? You know, are we comparing apples on apples each time?
I just think it's something that needs to be reviewed. One of the policies says it can be used for publications, travel and training, but they're using it for other things, which is fine. I don't believe anybody in the city is abusing their use of credit cards, but if you have a limit in your policy and you're not really, you know, going by that, they need to just take that out or make it broader, you know, it should fit what we're actually doing. And from the time those were put in place to now, things have changed a lot in how we do business. I know in my office, we have, how all of us have personally, we just use them a lot more. And so, I just think the awareness needs to be there of how you're using it and when you can use it, and a policy that people can be in line with.
And we'll look forward to seeing the policies then shortly and taking a look at them. The CDBG award, this is a Community Development Block grant, and we have received notice of an award of $75,000. We discussed this earlier in the year, and this is for the repairs to the city-owned house on Richland Avenue that's next to the, and the house is located next to the fire station. The city will provide $5,610 in cost share, and repairs recommended, we hope will also include, and I remember Councilmember Patterson bringing this up, making the house accessible for persons with disabilities, so we're hopeful we can incorporate that. And the house is intended for use for low income, low and moderate income needs in the city, and I think this complements our general, trying to provide different kinds of housing for a variety of different income levels.
This is the formula money we get every year, varies in amounts. Part of it goes to a fair housing program, which we do every year. You've sat through those. The other part is administration, so part of the money goes in various little pots there, but we need to get that appropriated moving forward so we can get this house fixed and up and running.
Councilmember Patterson.
If I might add, or at least throw this out there, I know that the Commission on Disabilities has kind of had their eye on this particular property with the notion of it meeting ADA code and all the regulations, and just to voice their voice, one of the things that they were really interested in is possibly kind of becoming a showcase home with Universal Design, which is ADA... is possibly kind of becoming a showcase home with universal design, which is ADA elements incorporated into it, again, if cost allows, understanding that. But it would be an interesting feature to have a home that, I guess, more tightly adheres to universal design, access, cradle to grave, which is not just individuals with disabilities, it's anyone, from an eight-month-old child up to an 88-year-old individual. So it's capturing all, as opposed to, I think, what we tend to think of with ADA is an individual with some disability, life-limiting disability. Again, this is, this would be all-encompassing, which is an interesting idea.
That's a good way of thinking about it, yeah, the universal design.
Although when I think, you know, I like the construction idea. Of course, as a showcase, remember it will be somebody's home, and it'll be managed by Metropolitan Housing Authority, so it's not like we'll have monthly tours or something like that.
Understood.
I don't think that's what he meant.
Well, that's what comes to mind when I, when I hear you say talk about showcase. I mean, that design is, it's a good idea, an exercise in design.
On the Athens Home Tours.
One time only, maybe.
Well, or, I think it's important to begin that discussion, and if it was, then as you go and rehab other houses or work in other houses, we've already done one, universal design. People know what that means, they know what the codes are, and it just makes the next one easier. So it's, it's a good idea to start, and I think universal design, many cities require it. So it's just, I'm not saying we need to require it, I'm just saying that I think it's really a good thing to get out there, so people can visually see what universal design means.
It does become model.
Councilmember Reisner.
Any idea when construction will start?
We're, I don't know that it'll even start this fall, but this is a project that we have up to two years.
Yeah, 18 months, two years.
Eighteen months to complete, so.
You know, next year will be, hopefully, Richland Avenue rehabilitation.
Yep, at the same time. We are in the process of moving, like, we have an equipment shed that's on the back property. We're getting, you know, proposals to relocate that, and so, slowly moving.
We have some discussion of renovation station two as well, a little bit, the Pickery Street entrance.
Thank you. Next agenda item has to do with parking garage repairs, and the mayor had spoken, and Service Safety Director Heran Mosley had spoken to us earlier this year, knowing that we needed to do an assessment of the parking garage, that it had been a number of years since that had happened. And it seems like some of the repairs, if I'm understanding correctly, we may have this happening in components, with the most urgent portion of that being the garage elevators. And it's, I will quote very briefly from Otis Elevator Company, "Due to the increasingly short life cycle of microprocessors and other parts, reliability of the equipment, safety, lack of engineering support, obsolete or soon-to-be obsolete components can effectively interrupt elevator service, and are becoming a greater concern to building owners." And so we do have some preliminary information, and tonight, I believe, we've just received this information, so we'll be hearing more about it, but it would be for servicing the two elevators in the parking garage, and would it also be in the city hall?
No.
At this point, just, it's just the parking garage at this point?
Simply because it has proprietary funds and can support this renovation at this time. We haven't had that opportunity yet to meet, to discuss with the auditor, the other capital improvements.
Okay. And so if the estimate is approximately $76,000, are we?
And then on further review, the last two items, they deem them as moderate priority, but knowing this counsel as I do, the Ella Voice and Whisper Fan are both ADA recommended, so that adds about $10,000 to that quota.
Within the elevator itself?
Correct.
Card?
You mean, so that means lowered, probably lowered dials or whatever?
Buttons.
Buttons, yeah.
And if it's Ella Voice, that may mean that it's, could also be.
I'm sorry, Ella Voice, Whisper Fan may not need to be done, because Ella Voice.
Voice activated.
Voice activated.
And it tells you, one, two, I mean, we are, you know, we're not in current compliance standards. I'm not saying we're out of compliance, it's, but when you do go to renovate, you, the best bet is to go ahead and have it, and it's better serving, as cradle to grave will eventually.
Then, and, I mean, this is an elevator, I think that it's crucial for ADA, because our handicap parking spaces are on a third level, if I'm not mistaken.
And again, what they're really stating is that all, we have actually four elevators total, I believe one here, two there, and one in the law administration building.
This is for both in the parking garage?
Yes, yeah. We're just addressing that now, because we have the money for that, but eventually, the other two elevators will have to be dealt with as well.
So we'll have some additional details then on the final pricing on that and appropriating of the money. And that does come from the proprietary funds, from the money earned at the parking garage, so that's how we're able to pay for it right now. How do we have in the proprietary fund right now?
I didn't bring mine.
Parking garage, we have 270, this is July 26, 272,317 on appropriated.
Yeah, we appropriate 30,000 to do some studies. We still have structural studies that have to be done in the parking garage, we're getting that. We also have, you saw there's a steel plate at where the bus stop used to be, we're having drainage problems there. I guess some of the tile drainage has fallen apart, and we need to repair that. That could come, the discussion with Public Works is that some of that should, could come out of stormwater money, some of it could come out of the parking garage, but since it's really a parking garage drainage, it probably, the line share should come out of that. We still have, yet to get a number on that. That's going to be more extensive, because really, it's, it's a line that goes pretty far around the building. I guess it's, it's been there for as long as the parking garage's been there, and it, we started noticing some degradation in it just this summer with all the rain.
Thank you for the information.
Just one other thing, does it make sense to merge the new elevators and the repairs to the parking garage? I have no idea whether it would make a difference.
That is, two different contracts, but that's something that we're still seeking information, we're still gathering information on the repairs to the parking garage.
Okay.
From our engineers' consultants.
Okay, thank you. The next item has to do with departmental personnel appropriations, and the auditor's office has been, and departmental staff have been reviewing the personnel costs that the city may have in what's we call Transaction Code 100s, that's for personnel infringe, and the costs that may be associated with that between now and the end of the year. And as we currently understand, we're going to need to increase those appropriations in that transaction class 100 in several departments, and I'll review those numbers. Lands and buildings will need $20,000 additional appropriated, and that will be for, based on the current expenditure rate and comp time buyout. Police will need an additional $120,000, and that's based on the current expenditure rate and projected expenses for Halloween and comp time buyout. Community corrections will need $1,500 based on current expenditure rate. The DUI court will need $3,900 based on the current expenditure rate. Water maintenance, $20,000 based on the current expenditure rate and comp time buyout. Water administration, $20,000 based on the current expenditure rate, retirement buyout and comp time buyout. So if I did my math right, that's approximately $165,000. What will happen is, is that, as I understand, Auditor Hecht, if, that what we'll do is, we will make an appropriation, and this will come out of the general fund.
Well, not, not.
Not out of the general fund, no. Out of the transaction classes 100 of the different, those different departments.
So the police and, and lands and buildings would be out of the general fund, the water appropriations would come out of the water fund.
Water fund, okay.
Yeah, so depending on which department.
Depending on the department.
And at least two of those you mentioned are, like, court grants that have their own money, so those would come out of those. And part of that appropriation is that those grants don't end with our calendar year, fiscal year. A lot of them end in October, and so you can only appropriate up to what you know you're going to have through the end of the year, so this will be an addition for the end of the year.
So we'll work carefully with your office to make sure that we've reviewed them and we have accurate amounts to, to make those transfers that we need. Okay, and so we'll be considering, will we be able to consider an ordinance then next week for those amounts, Auditor Hecht, do you think?
I think so.
That'll be ready? Okay.
Yeah, I think we should do it before the end of the year, as you mentioned, and it could, you know, the ordinance could go through three readings, and we can review it again, but three of us in my office have looked at that and think that we need these before the end of the year, and now would be the time to get that in place.
Okay, thank you. Next item has to do with the Assessment Equalization Board, and these are for the Lancaster Street sidewalk improvements. And if I'm understanding, we do have one, not a complaint, but appeal, somebody wanting to review the, the assessment that's been made. And as part of the process, what happens is, is that a citizen board who volunteers to, to look at the documents available, and then meet in a public hearing to review the concerns of the property owners. And so we do have three people who have volunteered to serve again, so our assessment ordinance will move through with their appointment then in an ordinance next week. So, thank them ahead of time for their service. Two of them have served before, Dave Discutner and John Garsky, and then I believe the third person this time is Maxine Rantain, will join the group, so. Thank them for their work. What will happen after the board meets is they'll make a recommendation on that, and based on their review, and then that final recommendation comes for council, before council to accept. Under miscellaneous, we have two items. The first one being a millage certification from the city, from the county, excuse me. We received our inside millage certification from the county auditor's office that week, last week, and this is part of our official certificate of our estimated resources. And so we need to have the resolution passed, accepting those rates, the millage rates that they have identified, and that needs to be back to their office, the county auditor's office, by October 1. So we will need to be putting through that resolution, accepting the rates next week. We'll start that ordinance then. We have two other items. One of them is the University Roadway Improvements Project and an update on that. I think Scott has a picture for us of a piece of equipment that we provided for you, and this is some of the equipment that's going on, and gives you a very vivid example of the size of the equipment, and so, that's out there working on it. When we did, you might recall that we authorized earlier in the year, spending up to $720,000, and also authorized being able to borrow that amount so that we could pay for the repairs. At the time of the initial appropriation of the money, we had an estimate for approximately $515,000 for the repairs. And we did receive an update from Director of Public Works, Andy Stone, today, explaining some of what has happened. The piece of equipment that you saw is very large, and in some cases, it was not able to fit into all the spaces that were needed. It was too big, and so that was the piece of equipment that's been used for reclaiming the old asphalt. So they, some areas that a piece of equipment just didn't fit. So they'll need to be total, you know, redoing of the, it will be called, it's before replacement, and it'll be required at the full depth, rather than being able to see all the savings from reclaiming part. There were also places along the roads where we thought that a half inch of the asphalt would do, and in some cases, half inch was adequate, but there were other places where we needed three inches. And so we've had some additional costs, just so it would be able to support, I mean, they physically saw with the equipment going up and down the roads that we needed, they knew they needed more asphalt, more depth to it to be able to support the weight. What has happened then is that the estimate at this point is needing $45,000 more than the $515,000 we originally thought. So we're not at the $720,000, but we're not as inexpensive as we thought we'd able to be, be able to be. So we need to appropriate an additional $45,000. We are hopeful, if I understand correctly, that, that we should have the final cost next week.
It, we might actually get the final final the week after, but Andy's confident that this, this amount will cover that. He also wanted me to point out that the $15,000 of the 515 was spent on engineering and design, so this is really just applying additional money towards the roadway improvements.
Okay.
And I would request respectfully, a suspension and the emergency, since this project is underway, and we need to go ahead and, you know, issue the, go forward with the work, which was an alternate bid item, and I believe he shared that with some members.
Right. So if we have that final number next week, then we will be able to amend the original ordinance that appropriated the 515,000 and increase it by the 45. Clerk of Council Debbie Walker checked with us, because there was some question about the loan authorization amount, but that amount says up to $720,000, so I think we're thinking.
Well, the authorization to spend, the loan has already been done for 500,000, but the, we left the, because our original estimates came in around 720,000, and so, yeah, I said just leave that, if you want to reduce your, your appropriation. So, so if something comes up again and they need more money, there's authorization there to spend more money.
Okay, but the loan authorization has actually been taken care of.
Well, as Paula said, 15,000 of that 515 that was originally appropriated was for engineering, and we borrowed 500,000 because some of the repairs are the city's responsibility, as you recall, the assessments that are going on.
Correct, a certain portion of those along the University Estates, right.
Right, so we, we borrowed 500,000 to cover what will be assessed back to the property owners, and then there is some cost involved that the city's responsible for on top of that.
Okay. Councilmember Pappy.
I would just like to add, you know, to encourage the folks who are getting the road improvements, I'm sure it's been difficult for them, but again, I think this goes back to the history in the University Estates area, and why the city never took these roads under because of the way that they were constructed in the first place. So as they're getting up there and digging back up what had been paved, that was not up to city standards, you know, we want these roads to be at city standards and be, you know, in good operation and be safe. So, you know, that's, this is kind of what happens when you get into something that you didn't build in the first place, and you really don't know what it looks like underneath. And so I think that's what our engineer and all our people who are working out there are finding as they go along, and they've brought up the current pavement. So we encourage everybody to continue with the patience, it'll get done, but, you know, now at least we know what we're dealing with from the start as a city, in terms of taking on these roads once they are completed.
We'd hope for a completion date of the 20th, it looks to extend that at least a week, so. Another thing I might add to, along with what you said, is that these roads had not been accepted by the city until now, although the city has been helping residents out there, I think, with some plowing and things like that. But the understanding is that once we improve these roads, that they will be accepted, and the city will be responsible then, moving forward, and when they are in need of repairs, it will be the city's responsibility.
Correct.
So, and they will be kept up better than they have been.
Great. Thanks for everybody's work on this, getting this, moving along towards completion. We have one additional item that I'm aware of, and that is the mower replacement, and I think we'll bring the firehouse roof repairs maybe under committee if the whole, for people to discuss. Councilmember Patterson, you have some information on the mowers?
Thank you. We're nicely, yeah, so this is a request that's come forward from Arts Parks and Recreation for a mower. It's, sounds to me to be a fairly universal mower, in that there are a lot of possible future uses for this particular mower, but the mower itself is $50,931.37 for the mower. It's a Toro Groundmaster 4000 with a turbocharged diesel engine in it, so it's running on diesel. It. It, also, the only add-on at this point in time is that it has a canopy over the top to shade whoever's operating the mower, but it does have the possibility of adding things like a brush on the front of it for sweeping, and it also can be tailored to use a plow. So again, it's kind of a multi-function lawnmower at this point in time.
And I, thank you. I guess I would like to reserve to, for them to go ahead and dive down into what the brush attachment would be and possibly even for the plow use and find out whether or not, so we build it at one time. But the mower, and we've talked about it at our internal finance and personnel auditor meetings, had been sick earlier this summer and they got it repaired, and they said that there was merit and thought they could nurse it through. Well, it broke again, so they're down right now, so.
And this is a 20-year-old mower?
Mm-hmm.
So, it's had a good life.
And again, it would come out of recreation unappropriation balance, which is, I believe, over $200,000, so.
Because we bought one last year, didn't we?
So, well, two years? Not for, that was, that was streets, for the bypass mowing, so this one's for parks. Parks, a lot of, a lot of park.
And there's a lot of park space.
Yep.
To rent, and they do get heavy usage when you see them out there, first thing in the morning, mowing, yeah.
I mean, with a plow, it'd be really nice. I mean, this also comes with a cap, a climate-controlled cap, which is another add-on for this particular mower. I mean, it's a do-it-all mower.
Yeah.
I'm not sure about that climate cap control.
CD player too, and a...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, sure.
No Blu-ray.
Yeah.
All right, any other miscellaneous items? Uh, yes.
I just want to mention a couple things. I will get to the reappointments for J-PAC, since this is personnel, it's kind of like that, eventually that, they're due for re-upping. Also, I'm still short a member of the Civil Service Commission, so I'm looking for a volunteer to sit on the Civil Service Commission, a citizen, so if you know somebody, shoot it forward to me.
Did you get the Board of Zoning Appeals?
No, I'm still working on that too. I'll open it.
Okay, we're going to move on to Committee of the Hall, and I'm not exactly sure who's going to handle this. Shall I?
Yes.
Okay. We have an item here, Rules of Council. We actually have a rule of council that we're, we'd like to consider. All of us know that when we have committee meetings, they start at 7 o'clock, but when we have council meetings, they start at 7:30, which often puts us later into the evening getting out, and audience members the same. So I'm putting forth a possibility of changing the rules to 7 o'clock. All meetings would start at 7 o'clock. And, did we have any discussion about that? Anybody love 7:30?
My only question is if, you know, sometimes we tack on a committee meeting before a council meeting, but I would say that that is in the minutes, so people would know, and, you know, occasionally we have to do that. Would you want to do 6:30, or would you keep it at the 7:00 and then we just run the...
We just keep it at 7:00 and just flow right into it.
I understand, makes sense.
Yes.
It makes more sense because everything's at the same time.
And then we know where we have to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think it, I think it...
I wasn't ready to say that, but...
I think it helps the audience too.
I think it does, because we have had people who've come who wanted to make comments on various issues and came at 7:30 when the discussion had happened with committee meeting at 7 o'clock, so it would help the public.
I just want to echo that. I've heard that on numerous occasions as well, that there's a number of people who would like to have come to the meeting, but they got confused as to when the start time was, and either came really early or they came, like, really...
I concur. So now the question is, we can, we can pass this under suspension of the rules next week, and it would take effect 30 days after that. If we go with the regular three readings, that's basically six weeks, and then 30 days after that, basically would take effect after Christmas, first of the year. So we can start the new year with new rules, or we can shorten that timeframe by a month or so, so do we have any consideration regarding that?
I think we should get it done as soon as possible, clear up the confusion. I saw an audience member nodding, yes, this makes sense, it helps.
Okay. Any other feelings about that? I would, it's my feeling that I would like to just move ahead with this and get it done in effect as soon as possible. So we'll go with that next meeting, which will be 7:30.
Next meeting will be 7:30, right. Was there ever a resolution, since we're all Committee of the Hall, on the recess for council?
The month, whether it was July or August or half of each? Is that you're referring to, Member?
That's what I'm referring to, Member Butler.
I had emails, everyone, and the responses that I got back was that more people wanted to keep the August recess supposed.
So my point to that was, just so people know, my concern was that with the universities changing, it seems like everybody is geared up and moving in the city now, come when the university begins, and we're still on recess. So that was why I brought that up, or we had discussed it earlier, so that was...
We did poll all council members, and I think there were two people who wanted to make the change and everybody else wanted to keep it, so, so we didn't bring it forward for discussion. However, we could have that discussion.
Well, the one other point too, to doing business during the year is so often we have the annual paving and the street projects and things like that that are coming forward in May and June and even July, so if we backed it up to mid-July, that was one of my concerns, was being able to get the ordinances through in a timely fashion so that they could be working and so Streets and Public Works Department could be working on the projects.
So is that support for August?
Support for August, yeah, keeping it.
Member Patterson?
And, you know, I was reminded several times this summer about this whole issue is that the mayor can call for a meeting.
I heard that some, yeah.
As well, so, no. No, no, but, which is something to keep in mind as well, that if something does come up, there can be meetings that are scheduled during the recess.
And I...
I have a miscellaneous item.
I'm sorry?
I, I'm...
Oh, I have another miscellaneous item too. We are going to be putting forward committee assignments for, starting next year, at our new 7 o'clock time. And what I would like, I'm asking council members to, just on a piece of paper, just write down what committees you would like to serve on. We have, we have four committees now. City and Safety Services, Finance and Personnel, Planning and Development, Transportation. And if you have any questions about those, you can ask me or Debbie Walker, the clerk. And we're not going to make any announcements until probably December anyway, so it couldn't have to happen right away, and if you want to think about it and change your mind, that's Yes?
Can I go back to the recess? I just need to say that many people here on council have children, and the, the school system starts a week before OU starts. So literally, if we're going to maintain our oath of serving council and being here for the meetings, those run to the end of July, and then we have two weeks, if our children are going to get back and start school on time. So we don't get a month recess. So I just wanted to throw that out, just to the other members to consider, so.
If we would like to have further discussion about this issue, let me know, and we will. Yes?
I was going to ask a question regarding progress on the town gown discussion that Member Patterson and the mayor had talked about. I didn't know if there's any more discussion about that as well. It was another topic I wanted to ask in the Committee of the Hall.
We, again, you've got the paper of what's required. I have yet to talk to anybody on the university side. I know I talked to Paige Los, who says that she could probably pull some of the components together.
Super.
I would suggest maybe you could, if you're interested, is to have a conversation with her. I think Steve's involved in it too. We need to have a contact person, a committee put together. I think Paige says she can come up with any theme, as well as videos. I did send a request to the, there's a person's address there for contact information, for a little bit more information in terms of the past conferences that have existed, although I really should just talk to you and find out what occurred at last up in Buffalo. You were up in Buffalo for the conference, right?
Sure.
Okay, so you said about 300 members?
There was 300 attendees. The, the keynote speaker, which was a luncheon keynote speaking event, there was about 200 people in that venue in and of itself, which was the largest capacity venue. It wasn't the largest capacity venue, it was the largest attendance at any one of the events that took place. So that's what we would be looking at, is at least having a venue that would hold somewhere between 200, 250 people, just to be safe. I also met with Paige for about an hour and a half the other day in looking at the punch list on this document that lists what ITGA would be, what's necessary in putting forward a proposal. Paige also indicated to me that there was probably five of the items on here, she said I can handle these. She said the same thing to me as she did to you, Mayor, which was basically, we need to continue to have dialogue with OU to see, you know...
But there's been no dialogue? Has there been dialogue?
I met with the President's Chief of Staff, this is going back about a month, when I first brought the bid forward to the mayor. I also went over and met with President's Chief of Staff and had that conversation. And at that point in time, the conversation was, this, something like this would be great, but again, I was talking to the Chief of Staff, I was not talking to President McDavis.
Go ahead.
I was, I mean, President McDavis and the mayor did discuss it, we all feel that this would be a wonderful opportunity. The time is so short, so it's whether or not we're able to accomplish it 2015, or do we look towards the next year? They do an annual conference. We also discussed, it's been over four years, but they had a State of Ohio, small one at Ohio State, that was like a one-day retreat kind of conference, but we haven't had one of those in a number of years, and so we talked about stepping stones, but I have not heard back yet, and the mayor's waiting on some responses.
We may not get a response. I suspect everything they want to give us is right in that silver plate right there, unless we can cajole them to give us a little bit more feedback. From my point of view, it wouldn't be bad to just take a shot at it. We don't have that much time and we, and, you know, the odds would be against us to put something together, but we might be able to, they might come back and they say, well, you missed items one, two, or three, or A and C, or whatever they, however they determine. So it would give us a better targeting on the next round, if need be. So I would, I would suggest if you want to pull together, have a discussion with Paige, set up a time, get with my secretary, we could probably put something together. We still need the OU component, and again, they're busy, they're screwed too, so.
I'm willing to, I'm willing to work through that avenue, because as I read through this, it's the one bullet on here that I think is critical, is written support from the University City and other local institutions. What support means is pretty abstract in this document. But I do have, as I've shared with the mayor before, I do have two other proposals that were successful bids that we have at our disposal to look through and use as a guide, so we have a template there to...
Why don't you resend that out? I know Member Nasen was asking about if there were financial commitments, which was really my question, are we going to have to, you know, spring out for, is it like the Olympics?
It feels like it, doesn't it?
How many billions do we have to spend, you know, and what's the return on it? And that was the question, I think that was, came to the forefront.
No radioactivity?
Just, I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, and just so everyone has a little bit more context to this particular conference. At my talk, I know that there were, there was a mayor who was there, there was two city planners that were there, there were a number of university officials, there was a police chief, actually, not, not so, there was a police officer for Boston College, Boston University, as well as an administrator from the university. So that, if you kind of multiply that by, by, you know, 50, there's a number of city officials, university officials, administrators, some students who attend this kind of event, which would be great through my lens to showcase what Athens has to offer, the relationships that we've cultivated that are only strengthening between Ohio University and the City of Athens. I just think it would be win-win, but we need to hurry and be diligent about it, miss.
And I think what we could potentially learn from other communities would be invaluable, but I just want to see us put together a proposal that's looking good, and the amount of time and commitment that would be required is a, is a concern, but...
At worst, we get rejected for this time, time around. At best, we get it and we, at best, we get, get a chance to network and all our problems are solved. All the town gown problems have been, they come to us, 300 people with all ideas, and it's like, wow, you know, but that's at the best, okay? Somewhere in between, probably.
Just a quick question, since it's with fall in June, what other activities would be happening in the city, one or about that time, that could be somehow worked into all this?
It's not a bad time, is what we all decided, pre-college, doesn't start till later, you know, in terms of the university's schedule. It's my understanding, and I don't know who's met with the Harbor Week, that Harbor Week and Boogie are getting back together, so there's some changes.
Not so much getting back together, getting closer in a time. And again, Paige is very cognizant of the hotel mix and when the major events are. So she could actually sit there and slot out saying, these, these are times I'll work for, for an influx of people, and these are times I will not.
There is enough flexibility, by the way. This year, it was June 3rd through June, June 5th, it's a three-day conference. If that were, if that worked with universities, the university's orientation, that'd be great. If not, it's easy to slip back, because, you know, from year to year, there is a fair amount of being able to slip, move it forward or move it back based upon scheduling, and in my conversation with Paige, Paige felt that the tail end of May was fine, and possibly even the beginning of June was fine too, but again, I don't have my head wrapped around when orientation actually starts for OU this coming year, 2014, 2015, so we need to think two years of it.
Well, you could have the conference sponsor a night at baseball, you know, Copperheads.
Well, that's it, part of the thing is activities, whether anything from Copperheads to Zombie Walks.
Very boring.
They, at University of Buffalo, Buffalo Conference, speaking of which, it was, it was a baseball game was one option, the other was to go on the maiden of the mist going up to Niagara Falls. We might be able to get something that floats down the hawkeye.
Up the hawkeye, yeah.
People can just come off it.
Valley Gem in Ohio.
Stern real.
There are things.
You have one more thing?
I do.
We put off the firehouse...
Firehouse roof repairs, yes, thank you very much. We did discuss this last...
I'm sorry, it's the fire escape.
Oh, it's the fire escape.
If I may.
Oh, yes.
I'll just take the hit on this.
Go ahead.
We, you authorized legislation under suspension emergency last week regarding the fire escape. I failed to have the bidding obviated, and the reason I'm coming back to you is to ask for you to consider amending that ordinance, including the suffocation of the bidding. I've talked with the architect again today, who stated the engineer has stated that it's obvious, we can't meet the timeline if we don't obviate the bidding in order to get this done before the weather turns, and of course Halloween, and they all view it still as a safety issue. And it's, the work proposed is going to bring the structural integrity back to that fire
Okay, is that what you needed to tell us?
That's what I needed.
So...
I have one more miscellaneous. We've been having meetings about electric aggregation, it's on the ballot, I believe it's going to be for County Issue Two, for the City Issue One. Part of the discussion is, you know, if it passes, we need to work on an MOU to work with the county, to work together, if we want to... to work with the county to work together if we want to pool our buying power. So, that's something that should be coming down the line. It, and I, it could be under planning development in one sense, but the, the fact is, I forgot to bring it up at that time. And it's, and it's a little premature, because the votes have to be put in, but we have to look at the scenarios of us voting it in and them not, versus both of us voting it in and how we pool our resource and what we want to see. We're having, we've been having several meetings with Chris Meo of County Commissioners. Paul's been sitting in on it, who else? That's about it, really.
Ron Lucas and then some other-
Roger Willpitt.
The woman that offered assistance that had done this in the interstate. But what I recognize, what we recognize, is we don't have any council members present sitting at these meetings, and we, you know, actually request that.
We open it up to you?
Yeah, to attend, so.
We've been meeting mostly twelve members.
Or in lunchtime, because one woman, Jessica, has, she has a job.
I can do it if it's-
Michelle's volunteering.
I am.
And part of the thing is, the conversation we're having with her is that we really should, depending on the vote, of course, we should have that memorandum to work together in place. There is an interest, I guess, from the county side, organization side, that they haven't seen something of this nature before. So, we're actually seeing a shared source, uh, resource agreement that may come to fruition. Again, it's always on the boat, we don't really want to count the votes before they come in. The other one, of course, is to start structuring what kind of request for proposals we would want for a, a bid. You know, the conversations go from brown to green energy, what kind of packaging you want, what kind of, you know, do you, you know, what kind of terms of agreements, and these are things that we should be thinking about even before the, the vote is done. So, we have a very clear idea of it, as well as things that have to be done before the election comes through. And again, the gas aggregation passed easily last time, but the idea is that most people have to be aware of it. I was fielding a call on my Facebook just recently about that and somebody saying, you know, "I'm going to buy," you know, "Who, who to buy from as a resident?" And it's like, well, things are going to change and, or maybe not, in, in three months, you know, so these are things to think about.
Because right now, people are, I'm, I get calls all the time.
Oh, my gosh.
Three or four letters a week. And I just say, "Oh, our city's talking about aggregation," and that, you know, gets them off the phone. But, you know, it's, all these people and all this mail, it's just-
But that's it there. Once you're, you've signed up for that, you know, you're pretty much out of that hour pool, unless of course you decide to break your contract, and then many of them have fees, you know? So, these are the issues to talk about, is what do we want to see? What do you think will happen and how we'll work together?
And educate city residents about the fact that we may have this, and they would know in November, so not to do anything.
Maybe hold off.
Hold off, because aggregating probably would get them a better deal.
Well, yeah, there's a difference between one, one person doing negotiations, sixty-four thousand.
Right, and you never know about who's calling you.
Yeah.
So, I just let my teenage kid.
So, are you handling these questions?
Uh, I will be one of the point of contact. I think Chris Meo will be the other one, although he's busy for the next couple of weeks, something about Papa. So, right. But at the same time, it's, it's up to us to educate people as they come up to us, because they'll come up to you as, you know, PUCO, Consumer Council has, has information on it. Again, so, we want to get something, some kind of information packed together, working on that as well, you know, an FAQ.
So, we have, Member Pappy, and if there's somebody else who could make that commitment? You have good lunches? You need somewhere?
No.
Whatever you bring.
We can't sell this?
I'm out.
Okay, well, we'll start with Member Pappy.
Okay. Well, eventually, you'd have to be voting on something.
Yeah, but what I'm asking, what I, that's what I was asking, is, is you're going to-
We can bring it back from committee meeting and discuss it.
Tell us what we need to go on.
Correctly. Any, I mean, now that we've done the draft intergovernmental agreement on SURE, we have an MOU with a high university, they're interested in doing something similar regarding electric aggregation.
Okay, so, we're going to have the fire escape redone. Okay.
Off the station.
We are adjourned.